All right, here we go. Okay, Board of County Commissioners, Bradford County, Florida, it's November 4th, 2025, it's 9:30 at this time, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Thompson to lead us into prayer. Thanks a lot.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your privilege and opportunity of being here. Father, we just thank you for each and every citizen that's here this morning, Lord. Father, we just pray that you bless the Jackson family, Lord, Father. I thank you for Mr. Roy and what he's doing, the people that he helped, Lord. Father, he was a big thing in this county, Lord, for many and many a years. Father, we just pray this morning, Lord, that you give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding to do the work that would be pleasing to you and to the citizens of this county. Amen.
Let's begin with the Good Life of United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on earth, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as we call this meeting to order, the first item is the proclamation declaring November 5th, 2025 as Roy Jackson Day, and I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Dolphy this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, anyway, it's a pleasure to have all of you here today, appreciate y'all coming out, all the family, and just a couple of things about Mr. Jackson, I know we all have stories, but my son was going to school up in Jacksonville, and I would take Roy's sausage up to the tailgates up there. So, the tailgate started when we first got there, it was a very small crew, maybe eight or 10 people, and eventually it grew to about 85 people, and it was because of Roy's sausage. And I'm not kidding when I say that, Doug Marrone was the coach of the Jacksonville Jaguars, and he was a big fella, and he'd come over and he'd lean over on my tailgate, and he'd say, "You mind if I get a few of those sausage dogs?" And I said, "No, please, help yourself." And he'd grab three in one hand, he'd grab three in the other, and then stick them in his pockets. And then, I'd see him during the football game, and he'd be down there, and he'd be eating sausage dogs during the football game. And half the time, you were able to go out, well, I had to lock him up in my truck, because if I didn't lock him up, everybody would go out to the truck before I got there, and they'd eat all the sausage. So, if I'd get out there, there'd be five or six grown men standing over by my truck waiting to get a sausage dog. And there was one time when it was right before Thanksgiving, and the store was closed, and I called Karen. I said, "Karen, I'm supposed to be bringing sausage dogs for Thanksgiving," and I said, "And I forgot." And she told her daddy, and he said, "Come on down." And anyway, he took me back in the back, and he loaded me up, I think I had 20 pounds of sausage, and was able to get up that Thursday morning and get them cooked up and get them to the team. And then, just another quick story, the following year after my son Declan had graduated, I got a call from one of the moms, and she said, "Hey," she said, "Do you think you could bring some of those Roy's sausage dogs up here for our tailgate party?" And I said, "Kristen," I said, "I think I was going to the Bradford game," and I said, "I'm not gonna be able to make it." And she said, "Well, how do you do it?" And I said, "Well, first thing you have to have is Roy's sausage." So, I sent her a pin on how to get to the market. And anyway, she ended up going to a local market somewhere in Mandarin to buy some sausage, and she tried to put it together, and it just didn't work out. So, I had one of the parents call and said, "Hey, can you come next week with some Roy's sausage?" I said, "I'm available, I can go." So, I went, and I prepared the sausage, and I got up there, and after the tailgate was over, Kristin walked up, she said, "Nobody ate any of my sausage." So, anyway, fantastic man, I would consider him a pillar of the community, an icon for sure. I have shared Roy's sausage dogs with many of my clients in Jacksonville, and to this day, sometimes when I walk in the door, they, it's one of the first things they say is, "Did you bring some sausage dogs with you?" So, anyway, just wanted to share those stories, I know we all have stories about Mr. Jackson, and I called him Mr. Jackson, he would tell me, "No, you call me Roy." And I said, "Mr. Jackson," I said, "I'll always call you Mr. Jackson." So, anyway, just wanna stand here today, and the Bradford County Board of County Commissioners of Florida proclamation declaring November the 5th tomorrow, which would have been Mr. Jackson's birthday, as Roy Jackson Day. Whereas Hinton Roy Leroy Jackson was born in 1933 to the late William Hinton and Evelyn Louise Bass Jackson, and whereas Roy Jackson was a devoted husband to Clifford Marie Jackson for 68 years, a beloved brother, father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and a friend to many. Whereas Roy Jackson was a longtime resident of Bradford County and a member of Bayless Highway Baptist Church, and whereas Roy Jackson faithfully served his community as the owner and operator of Roy's Market in Stark for 64 years. Whereas November the 5th, 2025 would have marked Roy Jackson's 92nd birthday, and whereas the occasion of his 92nd birthday represents an opportunity to recognize and celebrate his lasting contributions and positive influence. And now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Bradford County, Florida, does declare tomorrow, November 5th, 2025, as Roy Jackson Day, in honor and remembrance of his lifelong dedication, hard work, and positive impact on the community. It is my pleasure to present this to Ms. Clifford Jackson.
Jackson, or anybody else here?
Thank you.
Come on up.
Family, come on up, please. Y'all come on and stand by. Give me that floor.
Yeah.
Come on, this is. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners in Bradford County It is a legacy that will continue, hopefully, and behind this strong man is my mom. They both built this legacy, and I'm just so proud to be a part of it. And on behalf of my mom, my brothers, and myself, and the rest of the family, we thank you deeply for doing this for my dad. It's great, we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. We get a group kitchen with that in the same room.
Yeah, would it be possible if y'all could just come right here in the front?
Okay.
And that way, we can be right behind, I guess there's so many in the back. Thank y'all.
One of the other great legacies that Mr. Jackson left was, you know, during this time of food insecurity, when you can't afford food, that they would allow you to get something on credit, and you couldn't afford it, that you could. And my neighbor, Mr. Leroy Aaron, we call him Roy, if he couldn't get food or meat from Roy, he wouldn't go anywhere else. But that was one of the things that allowed you to have this.
Okay, y'all, you guys are family, so you don't have to make.
Brad don't eat sausage. I'm on time, he making the best sausage.
One, two, three, four. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think my son's all married my daughter because of Roy's sausage. He would call my dad to make sure he was gonna have sausage whenever he would come up, and they would come to our house. So. Good to see you, girl. You kicked it out. Okay, all right, at this time, I'll turn it over to Court Thompson.
Okay, it's that time of the year, it's time for a call for nomination for chair.
All right, I'd like to, I'm sorry, did it catch y'all?
No, I was just gonna say, do I have a nomination for?
Okay, I'd like to nominate Ms. Spooner for chair, second. Oh, oh, I didn't, I thought yours was gonna run.
Does she accept nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Okay. Are there any further nominations for chairperson? As far as your new chair.
I would go ahead and make a mo, there's been just nominated, y'all could just make a motion to anchor the chair.
I'll make a motion to follow through with the nomination and have Ms. Spooner as our new chair for the upcoming year. And I'll second. Okay. Oh, okay, yeah, all in favor, on time of mine. Oops, sorry, motion carries, all right, for the, turn it back over to the clerk.
And we now accepted the vote of Ms. Spooner as the chairperson, call up nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Commissioner Ray.
She's not here to accept it.
Is that, is that a problem, Mr. Attorney?
My legal opinion, no. I mean, if you wanna make her vice chair as a board, there's, there's a form present to do so.
Okay.
That would be fine.
But I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Andrews being the vice chair, vice sign of mine?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries for all.
What if she says she doesn't want it?
You better make the meeting, son.
Rumor is she wants it, or she's fine with it.
Okay, sounds good. I, I do wanna say one thing before we switch, I, Board, it's been an honor and a real privilege to be the chair, I can't thank you all enough, and anyway, thank you so much for allowing me the responsibility to be the chair, and I'm looking forward to working with Commissioner Spooner and for next year.
Thank you, Commissioner Reddick.
Thank you, Commissioner Reddick. I thank the Board for your, you know, is.
All right. You wanna switch or we are? Okay, all right, all right, sounds good.
Oh, who next on the agenda is out? You?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I, in our previous meetings, we have had some comments, public comments, and of which some allegations were made against our county, and where our manager has researched and brought some answers to those allegations.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chairman. As directed by the county commissioners, staff has investigated the allegations that were made during public comment previously, and I would like to address and clarify a few things brought up in past public comments, so everyone has the correct information. Regarding the meeting not being advertised, the May 15th meeting was held at 9:30 a.m. as scheduled, and the meeting was broadcast on YouTube at that time. However, when the meeting was posted to YouTube, it was labeled May 5th at 6:30 a.m. The label was incorrect, not the meeting. Staff have since corrected the video title and updated the description to explain the change. Item two, there have been a few comments about the commissioners' compensation that I would like to address as well. As we had previously stated, commissioner salaries are set by the state of Florida, not Bradford County. Each commissioner receives an annual salary of $42,183. As with any full-time employee, commissioners included, the county is required to pay FICA and Medicare taxes, which come to $3,227.70 annually per commissioner. The county also participates in the Florida retirement system for employees and has required contributions based on the individual's retirement status. Lastly, we also provide a health insurance plan to full-time staff and the commission. The yearly cost per person is $14,682.84. This is a benefit that the county provides. The county works each year to negotiate for excellent coverage and rates for this benefit. Adding it all together, salary, taxes, retirement, and insurance, the total cost to the county Adding it all together, salary, taxes, retirement and insurance, the total cost to the county per commissioner ranges between seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents per year. That being said, each commissioner is still only paid forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars annually. Lastly, a short explanation addressing an increase in taxes or millage. We understand that millage is not something everyone works with, and it can be confusing. We voted to stay with a millage rate of ten mils, which is the same rate as last year. The rollback rate of nine point four six six mils for this year, which was shown as an option in the newspaper advertisement, is a calculation used to figure out what rate would raise the same amount of revenue as last year, even if property values changed. Choosing ten mils does not mean an increase in the rate, though that does not mean that a property's taxes may not change. If someone's property taxes go up, it's likely due to their property's value increase, not because the millage rate has changed. If you'd like a simple official explanation of millage and how it is calculated, the Florida Department of Revenue has provided the Florida Homeowners Guide: Millage, which walks through how millage is calculated and how it works. We have a few copies printed out at the table in print, if you'd like to grab one after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Kanye, and I hope that clarifies the information and your only decisions made. At this time, we're going to move forward with our public hearing, the zoning land use change, and we're going to but Andrew's gonna lead his sentence.
Good morning and congratulations, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
These are the ordinances to the resolution that was read prior to the meeting and the planning and zoning meeting. These are the ordinances that accompany documents. And I will, I will read them now. This is an approval of S. twenty-five zero eight twenty-six A. Land use change from agricultural to industrial for Bradford County parcel number zero five one seven eight dash zero dash zero zero two zero two. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance number ninety-one dash zero nine, the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan as amended relating to an amendment to the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application S. twenty-five zero eight twenty-six A by the property owner. Under the amendment procedures established in sections one six three point three one six one through one six three point three two four eight Florida statutes as amended, providing for the amendment of the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Comprehensive Plan from agricultural to industrial in certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And I'd like to ask for a public comments, a motion and a vote.
Are there any public comments at this time? Seeing none here and none.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as read for approval of S. twenty-five zero eight two six eight.
The motion by Commissioner Doherty is your second to the motion.
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Thompson. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Three.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
That was four, Madam Chairman.
Okay, next is approval of Z. S. twenty, Z. twenty-five dash zero four. This is a zoning change from agricultural dash two A dash two to industrial light and warehousing ILW for Bradford County parcel number zero five one seven eight dash zero dash zero zero two zero two, and I will read the ordinance. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance ninety-six dash zero seven Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to the amendment to the official zoning atlas of the Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application by the property owner of said acres, providing for rezoning from agricultural dash two A dash two to industrial light and warehousing ILW of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, providing for an effective date. And again, any asks for public comments, a motion and a vote, please, ma'am.
Are there any public comments at this time? Seeing none here and none. Do I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as read for approval of Z. two five dash zero four.
We have a motion by Commissioner Doherty. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reddick. All in favor, any further discussion or questions? All in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Four up.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Next is approval of S. twenty-five zero nine zero eight A. Land use change from agricultural to commercial for Bradford County parcel number zero two zero five six dash zero 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 one zero one. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance number ninety-one dash zero nine, the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan as amended relating to an amendment, the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application S. twenty-five zero nine zero eight A by the property owner. Under the amendment procedures established in section one six three point three one six one through one six three point three two four eight Florida statutes as amended, providing for the amendment of the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Comprehensive Plan from agricultural to commercial of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And once again, we need to ask for public comments, a motion and a vote.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none here and none, I'll call for motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance as read for S. two five zero nine zero eight A.
Motion by Commissioner Reddick.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Doherty. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Four up.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Next is the zoning change. This is approval of Z. twenty-five dash zero seven. This is zoning change from agricultural two A dash two to commercial intensive CI for Bradford County parcel number zero two zero five six dash zero dash zero zero one zero one. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance ninety-six dash zero seven Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to an amendment to the official zoning atlas of the Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application by the property owner of said acres, providing for rezoning from agricultural dash two A dash two to commercial intensive CI of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, providing for an effective date. And again, we ask for public comments, a motion and a vote, please, ma'am.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none here and none, ask for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve the ordinance as read for the approval of Z. two five dash zero seven.
Motion by Commissioner Doherty. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Thompson. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Four up.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Next is approval of S. twenty-five dash zero nine zero nine A. Land use change from agricultural to commercial for Bradford County parcel number zero one nine six eight dash zero dash zero zero one hundred. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance number ninety-one dash zero nine, the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan as amended relating to an amendment to the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application S. twenty-five zero nine zero nine A by the property owners. Under the amendment procedures established in sections one six three point three one six one through one six three point three two four eight Florida statutes as amended, providing for the amendment of the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Comprehensive Plan from agricultural to commercial of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And once again, we need to ask for public comments, a motion and a vote.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none here and none, ask for a motion for approval. I have a motion.
I, I make a motion to accept the ordinance as read for S. two five zero nine zero nine A.
Motion by Commissioner Reddick is your second.
Second.
All in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
All right. Next item is approval of Z. twenty-five dash zero eight. This is a zoning change from agricultural dash two A dash two to commercial intensive CI for Bradford County parcel number zero nineteen sixty-eight dash zero dash zero zero one hundred. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance number, ordinance sign six dash zero seven, for Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to an amendment to the official zoning atlas of the Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application by the property owner of said acres, providing for rezoning from agricultural dash two A dash two to commercial intensive CI of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, and providing, providing an effective date. And once again, any asks for public comments, a motion and a vote, please, ma'am.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none here and none, I report a motion at this time for approval.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as read for approval of Z. two five dash zero eight.
Motion by Commissioner Doherty is your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thompson. Any further discussions or questions? If not, all in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Four up.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Next is approval of S. twenty-five zero nine one six eight. This is a land use change from residential low density to commercial for Bradford County parcel numbers zero four four five two dash zero dash zero 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 and Bradford County parcel number zero four four five three dash zero dash zero zero two hundred. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance number ninety-one dash zero nine, the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan as amended relating to an amendment to the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Bradford County Comprehensive Plan pursuant to an application S. twenty-five zero nine one six A by the property owner. Under the amendment procedures established in sections one six three point three one six one through one six three point three two four eight Florida statutes as amended, providing for the amendment of the Future Land Use Plan Act series of the Comprehensive Plan from residential low density to commercial of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And once again, we need to ask for public comments and motion and a vote.
Any public comments at this time? Seeing none here and none, I'll call for a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as read for S. two five zero nine one six A.
Motion by Commissioner Reddick. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Doherty. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Okay. And lastly, this is approval of Z. twenty-five dash zero nine, a zoning change from residential mixed, single-family slash mobile home dash one, which is RSF slash MH dash one, to commercial intensive CI for Bradford County parcel numbers zero four four five two dash zero dash zero 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 and Bradford County parcel number zero four four five three dash zero dash zero zero two hundred. This is an ordinance of Bradford County, Florida, amending ordinance ninety-six dash zero seven Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended relating to an amendment to the official zoning atlas of the Bradford County Land Development Regulations as amended pursuant to an application by the property owner of said acres, providing for rezoning from residential mixed, single-family slash mobile home dash one, which again is RSF slash MH dash one, to commercial intensive CI of certain lands within the unincorporated limits of Bradford County, Florida, providing severability, repealing all orphans in conflict, and providing for an effective date. And once again, we need to ask for public comments, a motion and a vote, please, ma'am.
Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as read for Z. two five dash zero nine.
A motion by Commissioner Doherty is there a second to the motion? Second by Commissioner Reddick. Any further discussion or question? If not, all in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Four up.
And that's it. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doherty.
Thank you.
At this time, as we move to our public comments, we ask that you speak to one at three minutes' time and state your name and address for the record, and also just remind you to speak into the mic so that you can be heard and that it's recorded. We ask that be respectful in your comments, and our board will not engage if there's a need for follow-up of our manager or the chair can make an assignment. We ask that there be no vigorous behavior that would be offensive from anyone. Today I have one comment from, oh, I see.
Good morning, County Commissioners. Morning. I called the county manager's office yesterday and spoke with Taylor because I wanted to get a number of county employees. She told me there was one fifty full-time and twenty-five part-time because I was looking at the, the insurance because I wasn't aware that it was a hundred percent covered. And I would like to find out from the board what you actually consider low salaries that was justified in that meeting that I seen. But the number she gave me actually didn't add up. I actually went through the budget and added them up, and it come to three million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, some more. But I also went to the records, request that Amanda had sent me from AFMD, and it's actually three million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and one dollars. But I would like to get an accurate account on how many actual employees we have in Bradford County and what you actually consider low salaries to justify where there's actually no cost share with any of the employees. I understand that there are employees that don't make a lot of money, but there's quite a few that make quite a bit, and I think they could cost share just a little bit on it. And that's about it. And y'all have a blessed day. If I could get them from the manager's office, those answers, because I actually asked for that in an email, but I actually got a phone call back, and it seems kind of crazy that we only got a hundred and fifty-five employees in Bradford County.
Thank you. All right. That's on the comment card that I have that I missed anyone. Thank you. Next, we will have the approval of our consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Reddick is your second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Doherty. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
Four up. And next on the agenda is the Partnership for Strong Families. Do we have any representative? You can come and take the podium, and if you would just speak into the mic so that we can hear you clearly.
Hello, good morning. So we have a proclamation declaring November as National Adoption Month. We are here from Partnership for Strong Families. Our main goal is to facilitate safe, permanent and nurturing homes for the children in Bradford County as well as twelve other counties in Florida. We do this through either providing resources to keep families together and sometimes also through adoption. So Jordan Wood is here to give some more information on the adoption.
Morning, everyone. My name is Jordan Wood, and I serve as the Adoption Program Supervisor for Baker, Bradford Union and Alachua Counties. As many of you are aware, November is National Adoption Month, a time dedicated to celebrating the children and families whose lives have been transformed through adoption and to recognize the tireless efforts of our staff and partners who make those lifelong connections possible. At Partnership for Strong Families, we proudly serve thirteen counties across north central Florida. Within our service area, more than two hundred and seventy-five children currently have a goal of adoption. Of those, ninety-two children continue to wait for their forever family. Right here in Bradford County, there are five children who are not yet placed in an adoptive home. Those children are waiting for the love, stability and sense of belonging that every child deserves. While National Adoption Month is a time for celebration, it is also a time for reflection. It reminds us of the ongoing need to find permanent loving homes for the many children still waiting. Like I said, ninety-two children right now in our thirteen counties are waiting. Each of these children deserve an opportunity to grow and thrive within a family that is committed to them unconditionally. At Partnership for Strong Families, we remain steadfast in our mission to identify and support compassionate, dedicated individuals and families who are ready to open their homes and hearts through adoption. Together, we can ensure every child has the chance to experience the safety, love and belonging of a forever family. Thank you for your continued partnership and for joining us in celebrating this important month.
Thank you. Any, any questions or, Sidney, we'll now call for a a motion to approve the proclamation declaring November twenty twenty-five as the National Adoption Month. Have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proclamation declaring November twenty twenty-five as National Adoption Month.
Motion by Commissioner Doherty. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reddick. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor by the sign aye?
Aye.
And thank you for all that you all do. Do we have the proclamation that we can actually release? Do we have the proclamation that we can actually release? Bradford County Commissioners of Bradford County, Florida, proclamation declaring November twenty twenty five as National Adoption Month. Whereas National Adoption Month is a month set aside to raise awareness about the urgent need for adoptive families for children and youth in foster care. And whereas individual neighbors, community members, and citizens of Bradford County, we have a responsibility to acknowledge that every child deserves love, support, security, and a place to call home. And whereas there are sixty two children in our local foster care systems waiting for adoption that will provide them with the love of a family, a permanent home, and a stable foundation for their future. And whereas families who choose to embrace the life-changing path of adoption, especially those who are willing to adopt siblings, older youth, and young people with complex medical and behavioral needs, make a meaningful and lasting difference in the lives of some of the most vulnerable young people in our society. And whereas adopted parents and families require and deserve the utmost community respect, resources, and support. And whereas during National Adoption Month, we celebrate all families that have invited a child in need into their hearts and homes and express our profound appreciation for agencies and individuals who make adoption possible. Now, therefore, I by the power vested in me as Chair of the Bradford County Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty five as National Adoption Month. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and called the seal of the affix on this fourth day of November twenty twenty five in Bradford County. We encourage all citizens to collaborate and educate in the community, raising awareness and fostering an environment where both children and adults feel understood and respected during their times of challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
All right, and again, thank you for the partnership. And next we have NV five project proposal for State Road one hundred turn lane addition at the Keystone Height Airport at seventy eight thousand four hundred.
Is there anybody from NV five or Jason, Jason, if you don't mind explaining the details?
Good morning. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is a state appropriations that we received. It was not the full amount that we needed to do the whole project. But we are able to fit in the scope of putting in the right end turn lanes coming westbound on one hundred, going into the old airport access and the new airport access and tying in the new corridor. And that's what this design work is going to be for out of that appropriations. Yes.
Question, uh, from the board. All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Don. I ask for a motion for approval of this project.
Make a motion to approve NV five's project proposal in the amount of seventy eight thousand four hundred dollars for the key turn by its own lane additions.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Doherty, is there a second to the motion?
Second to the motion.
Okay, second by Mr. Thompson. Commissioner Thompson, any further discussion? If not, all in favor by the sign aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. And although we have it on the agenda for our Bradford Sports United for the Revolution, we're asking for that to be deferred from the agenda for today.
Yes, ma'am. And I think that there's two parts to action I M nine. So if you could just take the second part, the MOU, rather than not the resolution, I think that would be in order. That's your pleasure.
All right. And if this be first of the board that we will remove item A and just address item B of that. You go with that.
Yes.
Okay, this would be the MO between the Bradford County and the City of Star for the Sports United Inc.
You want a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the MOU between Bradford County and the City of Star for Bradford Sports United Inc.
We have the motion from Commissioner Reddick, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Thompson, is there any further questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
On the MOU, and I think Mr. Corning might be able to answer this question. I know we had, excuse me, had a, well, I don't want to say approved, but I know that there was a consensus at one point that we form the Bradford United with the TDC, the county, and the city. And then there was, at the time, I had concerns about where the hundred and fifty thousand dollars was going to come from. And I think since then, the board has put that into the budget. So this would provide for this year and also budgeted for next year for Bradford United. Is that correct?
Certainly this year, next year. Yeah, certainly this year and next year will be addressed when the budget season rolls around, but it's certainly around.
But I thought we voted two years. We agreed, the agreements with the city in, yeah, two years.
You did, but the actual budget itself obviously hasn't been done yet, so.
Okay.
But that is the intent. You're correct. Okay, so I want to beat this to death. So we're right back to really where we started as far as how are we going to fund? The, I mean, I know we put it in the budget, but then, so again, the request was, the request from me anyway, was that we find areas that we could cut the budget so that we would be able to provide a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Bradford Sports United. Am I saying that right? Yeah, Bradford Sports United. So again, moving forward, next year, you know, we're looking at, you know, again, how do we, how do we do this to where we're not pulling money from reserves or anywhere else and essentially house money? But we're making, you know, real cuts to be able to provide either a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Bradford Sports United.
Yes, and that is, everything you said is exactly right. Going forward into next budget season, we will be looking for opportunities to find money that is already budgeted or is already part of the other budgets to move over into this to fund the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But as for this year, you're right, it came from the general fund.
I'm motioning on the floor, getting any further questions?
Well, I'm still concerned about where we're going to get the hundred and fifty thousand for next year and how we're going to. So as we have our budget talks, I think, talking to the clerk's office, those will begin soon. So that we're not waiting till the last minute to try to figure out where we're coming up with the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I would encourage the board, if we're going to move forward with this, that this is going to be a real cut somewhere to be able to provide that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not going to be, again, a transfer of funds from somewhere else. It has to be a real cut coming from somewhere to be able to provide for something that we have not done before. We struggled to find funding to be able to do this. So again, that would be, moving forward, again, that would be my request. So let's, go ahead.
Okay. You've heard Commissioner Doherty's concern, and we have a motion and a second on the floor to have the MOU between Bradford County and the City of Star for the Sports United. If there's no further discussions or questions, I'll take a vote at this time. All in favor with the sign aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, two one, three one.
Absolutely. Moving forward, there are significant cuts made somewhere else. By all means, I would say yes.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have the Florida Department of Finance Corporation and the Senior Director, Ryan Marcus. Marcus here can speak.
Yes, Madam Chairman, Ryan is here to answer any questions you may have regarding the development of Dwight Ute and the City of Star. There is some, I guess, some questions about the mechanism of funding through C-PACE. And we've all met with you individually and promised you that we would also have an opportunity to discuss it in a public hearing. So this, this is, this is that.
Okay, Mr. Marcus, if you could come forward and just perhaps if you could just give us just, I don't know, a thirty second, you know, explanation of what you're trying to do.
Sure. So my name is Ryan Marcus with the Florida Development Finance Corporation located in Winter Springs, Florida. I had the opportunity to speak with you all. And just a quick overview of the program. Is this a unique financing opportunity for commercial-only property owners? And the reason why it's unique is the mechanism for repayment is on the tax bill. And with that security on the tax bill, it creates the ability for private capital to come in and lower the cost of capital for somebody that would like to improve a property or put a new property here in Starb. So this, again, is a voluntary program. This is not like a CDD. It's not being put on everybody's property. Solely individual voluntary program for somebody like this financing. So happy to answer any questions you guys have on it, but.
You all had some questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
As far as, I don't know if I caught this when we sat down and discussed this, but did a little bit of homework. And I know that Mr. Hewitt and you had talked about like individuals that may want to lease to own, right? So when it turns into ownership for that particular person, then that particular person would be responsible for their own taxes on the property.
That is correct. It's voluntary, just for that one parcel or parcels that that person owns.
Right. But then, as the project winds down, let's say, you know, Mr. Hewitt is able to sell all of the, well, not all of it, but when he gets down to, I think it's four units, right? Doesn't he have to?
Yeah, so I think you're going on the perspective that turns it into a residential type of property, then they would have to be paid in full. So let's say that there's twenty units and he sells fifteen of them. The last five would have to be sold. They can't be individual units still remaining with an assessment on the property.
So at that point, then, Mr. Hewitt would have to go ahead and, and I guess finalize his, say, debt to you. And then it would be up to Mr. Hewitt at that point to carry the rest of it. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That's, that's any other question I have?
Okay.
Like I said, I don't know if we talked about that.
No, that's okay. Great question.
Good.
And for me, I have a few questions, so just bear with me. Maybe, I know that this is, will take place in the city down by the park. I call it City Walk, the district. So is there discussion with the city and its impact upon them in the City Walk downtown area?
So, so the agreement would be with the county, and it's inclusive of the county, the borders of the county, which includes the city, is that what you're asking? So as, as far as I would know, at this point in time, if the county approves it, it includes the city. So the city would not have, there's not a discussion that's happened with the city, but happy to have it with them. And if they would like to remove themselves from the program, I think we could work that out. But this is, again, this is a voluntary program individual for certain parcels that somebody would like to have it on.
Okay, and I think it will be a good thing to have a discussion with them since it's in the heart of our city. And then I wanted to ask, um, with, um, with this being the C-PACE, which is the commercial as opposed to the residential pace, is there any connection with the residential pace litigation? Would that obligate the county in any kind of way involved with that?
So I think there's two questions. There, so there are four different agencies here in Florida that do PACE. One of them is in litigation with counties and other tax collectors. We are not that agency, and that is due to they were moving forward without interlocal agreements. That is not how the FDFC moves forward. So no, from that perspective, there, you would not be involved in litigation with us at any point in time. And then on top of that, within our interlocal agreement, I'm not an attorney, but, you know, we would be settling things through the interlocal agreement. And we cover you guys for any type of issue that may come up within the program or the financing.
Okay, and then on, I think it's about page two of the, of the document. But anyhow, the language says that the financial agreement shall include a thorough explanation of the PACE financial process and specify at what point in the process the special assessment will be added to the real property owner's tax bill. And if it contained any other terms and conditions. So does your application clearly indicate that so that there won't be any hiccups?
No, no, there's, there's a financing agreement that is signed between the property owner and us. And within that financing agreement are clear terms set up, just like you would go for a mortgage. So you would have a setup fees and everything that would be combined and make that financing put in place in front of the property owner before they move forward.
Okay, so everybody knows everything upfront, so no, no, no getting fined.
And, and as I noted in our meetings, you know, this is not a quick close. There are attorneys involved in this entire process, and it typically takes about sixty to ninety days to close one of these financings. So if there are questions that come up and the property owner has those, they will be resolved within those talks.
Okay. And then the other obligation would be with our tax collector and also with our property appraiser. And so in your communication with them, they're comfortable with this process?
I, I have not yet had a conversation with the tax collector. When I arrived here last time, we requested that conversation. I believe she was, didn't have an opportunity to speak with us. Happy to have those conversations, but typically, we first get an interlocal agreement with the county. Then we request the services agreement with the tax collector and the property appraiser, but happy to have those conversations.
Okay. Anyway, that would be an important one for me, too.
I'm there with you. I'll be happy to have.
And just for clarification for the listeners and everybody, as the county would not be obligated for any of those charged fees are in a position of being held responsible.
That is right. There is no responsibility on the county. All administration is done through our program. All financing is done through private investors, and there's no responsibility of the county. Once you guys adopt this program, you are outside of it. We take care of everything. And if something pops up, you can call our office and we would handle it for the county.
And I know I'm drilling a room. What would be the average cost, um, mortgage, you say?
You're talking about for like the interest rate or for fees?
The cost, monthly or whatever, the average cost for the.
So these financings range anywhere from a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We just closed one that was two hundred and ninety million. So, I mean, your, your annual fees could be somewhere between, you know, five thousand dollars a month to a hundred thousand dollars a month. I mean, I mean, excuse me, I apologize, annually on the tax bill. So, I mean, it could be fairly large on the tax bill, but you're talking about a one-time payment and not a monthly payment like you would have on your mortgage. So if you broke that down by month, it's basically like you're going to a senior lender or construction lender for this. It's just an annual payment instead of a monthly payment.
And what targeted population are you trying to get into the dwellings?
That would be, that would be a question.
I can go answer.
Okay, come.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you letting me ask all my questions.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good to be here. I'm Dwight Hewitt. You know, not about my City Walk project. I'm thinking about this, I want you to think about it more globally. Amber Shepherd is out beating the drum for Bradford County. This is really just another tool. And, you know, for me, it will help redo some of my cost of funds. And in this environment, this lending environment, that could be the nowhere go now for a lot of developers. So it's, it's very important for us to be able to have twenty or thirty percent of our financing at a much lower cost basis. Even fifty or a hundred basis points can make a difference in a project. And when I talked about Amber Shepherd, she's competing. Bradford County is competing with other counties for bringing developers, not just like me, but even much larger to this county. Baker County, Columbia County, Duval County, Flagler County, Levi County, Marion County, Swanee County, St. John's County. All these counties are part of the C-PACE program. You're competing against them, and I hope that you'll take that into consideration. As you, you know, you all had great questions when we met with you individually, and these are great questions, too. So I hope that you'll think about it, like, how can we compete? You don't have to agree to every development that would come to this county. You don't have to agree to every development that would come to this county. That's up to you. But at least you have the tools to get someone to consider Bradford County. And for the revenue and the tax, taxes that you'll get, for the job creation, all those things, you can contemplate which ones you want to have. But having a C-PACE program available, it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it. So I, I can answer other questions and your questions about, was it about mortgages for? Well, we, we're not even there yet. These folks will be, I mean, a rent-at-home program. It's usually a two- or three-year rental basis. And then at that point, they've qualified. We think some of them will come in, maybe not the best credit terms, and they may not have a great credit score. So we're going to work with them to get their credit score up. We think that we're going to have a lot of younger couples. You know, young teachers, young military people. We've seen a lot of folks reach out to us on this little balloon that we floated related to who our tenants would be. But, you know, after we have them for a couple of years and then they say, we want to go into an ownership program, I, I have no idea what the mortgage is going to look like, considering what it's been over the last couple of years. So the rental will be a market rent. Some people were talking about early on that we were subsidized. We're not. We have no subsidies whatsoever. So it, it'll be a, a market rate rent for these places. Something that the demographic that I just described, young couples, could be retired couples for that matter. It does have a wide range in the demographic, but they can, they can afford it based on their salary as we see the details of salaries in Bradford County and rent. We think people are going to come from other areas, too.
What do you imagine the average rent-to-home would be?
We're putting it out there at $2,300 for a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath.
Okay. And my little, quick little calculation, I was thinking about if you had an average income of the, of people making about $50,000, then about, you know, three-quarter of their income would go for.
Well, we're looking at couples who are married and both work, generally speaking. And, and in this environment, when you have correctional officers, you, you've got a forty to forty-five thousand dollars starting salary. So combined income is around $90,000 and up. So, you know, it's, it's also retired military, it's first responders, it's the nursing community or, or medical community. We're reaching out to them first. They have the first opportunity here. We made a commitment to do that. But, you know, we have around Bradford County, this is a number that people will be shocked by. In a forty-five-minute radius of, a forty-five-mile radius of Bradford County, you have almost a million seven thousand, seven hundred thousand people. So there is a lot of capability to fill forty-five units. And the $2,300 a month, based on that initial group, they can afford it. But there's nothing for them. You know, they don't have really a choice right now. There's subsidized housing, which they can't qualify for because they make too much money. And then what they can afford, they have to live in Clay County or Baker County or some other county other than Bradford. And that was the conundrum, like to, to maintain and keep a, a teacher who is living in Clay County because that's where they need to live, because there's nothing here. This was explained to me by people from the school, Will Hartley and, and other people involved in the program. They said they would come on and be teachers for a couple of years, and then they would eventually figure out that they can make more money in Clay County. And they're living there already, so they would leave. So our hope is that we can help retain them by having a nice place to live that they can actually afford. And that's why, that's really how we spawned CityWalk, the name of our project.
Thank you for answering those questions for me. And my main thing was, I, I look forward to our county improving and bringing in more revenue. But at the same time, I don't want to see our residents or people who may live there placed in a financial situation where they really can't afford. And so that was a concern and question in my own mind.
Well, one other point, too. We've got it set up so that we can make it. You know, I, I've owned apartments in, in Bradford County. And I was renting to some of the same group that I mentioned earlier. Some of them were guards out at the prison or whatever, but it wasn't the, the rent that they couldn't afford. It was the downstroke. They couldn't afford the first month, the second, or the last month, and the security deposit, basically three equal payments. They couldn't afford that. I wanted good tenants, so I, I've found a way to figure it out and work it out. But in this program, they only have to come in with the first month's rent. There's no last month's rent. There's no security. We have that figured out through an insurance program that we pay for. So we make it very affordable for them. They can afford the rent based on what we see.
Those are all the questions that I have and, and for our legal counsel and looking at the resolution and everything, the content thereof, you're comfortable with.
Yes, our, my partner reviewed it, and yes, I can speak math for the part.
County manager.
Yes, ma'am. Best to find all the conversations we have with both Ryan and Dwight. We're comfortable with them for.
Okay. And I know that it doesn't necessarily, our clerk, but, but from based on the knowledge that you have, you're comfortable?
I have absolutely no knowledge of what I partner did. None whatsoever.
I know he and Kenny hadn't really had a, had a chance to meet, per se, with Ms. Phillips, but from what you heard, are you comfortable?
Yes, sir. It kind of scares me. I'm in that lawsuit.
Residential side, sorry not to interrupt, residential side has been a nightmare for the new roofs, for homes and stuff.
Right.
Where they were put into effect. And that's all I've heard, is the negative side of the residential side.
Commissioner, right, it kind of.
Yeah. Dwight, now, each one of these townhomes, will it, they'll have their own separate tax parcel number?
They'll each have their own folio number. That's correct.
Okay. So that way, when each one, like, somebody's buying it, that one's totally paid off, done through the tax collector.
Exactly.
Nothing else to do with that. And then the resident, whoever buys it, has to find their own finance somewhere else.
And they'll have their own tax bill that has nothing to do with C-PACE.
Okay. And like, and you, you shared, but what you're saying is for a builder, you get such a better interest rate. That's why the this program will help bring more development to Bradford County.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, it's a no-go, no or no-go for, for, I think, many developments, especially in this environment.
And for the electrical consumption, it'll be through the city electrical program?
That's right. We do have solar, so that's another benefit to this project. We want to work it out. We've talked to the city. The city is hugely supportive, by the way. You alluded to that, I think, earlier. They are very, very supportive of this project. We think we'll create more power than we'll actually consume. We won't have batteries because we're doing a sustainable project. Meaning that it has high insulation factor. Things in the concrete are, like, it's called slag. It's stored there as a waste product, but actually makes the concrete better. And because of that, we, we check all these boxes for sustainability. So we will create electricity, so much so, by our engineers' estimates, that we may be a, a net giver to the, to the city. That's at no cost to the city. But we'll take power at night, and those days when we don't have sunlight, we will take power. But generally speaking, when you look at like the farmer's almanac or any other resource, you can see that you have a lot of sunny days. We have sunny days in Stark. So we will be on the grid. We will buy electricity from the city and other utilities, water, sewer, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Oh, and one last point. We, we hope to cap for our residents, you know, another affordability piece to this. We hope to cap, we're working on a number. It might be a hundred and fifty. So they will pay, don't hold me to it because we don't have this number nailed down yet, but it may be a little bit less. But we want to cap them at about a hundred and fifty a month. They could pay less, but not more than a hundred and fifty for electricity. And in a city like Stark, where they repackage this Florida power and light, that's hugely important to a homeowner or to a resident. So we, we were very sensitive to that and want to make sure that we can find a way to make it more affordable as a result.
Yes, um, Mr. Thompson.
Ms. Thompson, you have anything you want to say or anybody wants to speak on this?
The city manager is here also. We are not aware of any of this. So we did come today to kind of find out some things. We are very aware of the project. We are for the project. We're not willing, you know, we had no idea that he'd come to the county to seek additional funding, different things like that. As far as the power and stuff, I'll let the city manager. But I do know that we will have to have an interlocal agreement because we are the power provider. So I'll definitely let him. I'm mostly here just to find out some information as well.
Dr. Bima, Dr. Bima, go on, because the, the audio doesn't pick up. I'm sure, you're all right, Chris. Thank you.
Sure.
One thing on the electric, though. Yeah, just want to touch a little bit on the electric. We have special solar agreements that it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar rebate on the electric bill on what you actually send back out to the system versus what you store or anything else like that. So there is a little bit, little bit there that's potentially an issue. I think, I think I'd sent you the solar agreements. Okay, all right. Well, yeah, it's, it is, it's.
So, so there may be some concerns that you have that they may be unaware of. So I would strongly recommend meeting with the city so that we can go over some of that thing because it's going to impact your electrical consumption. So that would be an important piece.
Yeah.
I, I would hope that that wouldn't hold up you voting for this because that's, even if I didn't have solar, it's still a very, very project. And, you know, there's a lot of residents in Stark who do not have solar. So anyway, I hope you will consider this and that you'll pass a resolution.
And I appreciate, again, your patience in asking all of those questions. And so if those entities that will be impacted, the city, our tax collector, just meeting with them to, whatever it needs to be.
No question.
Ms. Ms. Thompson.
Yeah. Ms. Phillips, that's going to put quite a bit of work on you all in.
I mean, it'll go on our tax bill.
Ma'am?
It'll go on our tax bill, and I'll have to have it in the U with them.
Right.
Like, it's like you're not an annual assessor.
Yeah. And I, I apologize, but we haven't had a chance to speak yet. But just to speak to that really quick, is that what we'll do from our agency is we also act as the assessment administrator. So what that means is all that data will come to us, however you would like that sent to you, whatever that upload might be. We present all that data to you to where you should just be able to upload it. And there, within the services agreement, there's a fee that you guys would receive when these go on the tax bill. And again, with this being commercial and not residential, we're not talking about hundreds or thousands of these like you've seen in other counties. I mean, you're probably potentially talking about one or two maybe a year. And typically, they pay off within five to seven years. So even though they're longer term, this is not something that's going to sit on the tax bill. And from our perspective, we do not want to be in litigation with anybody. We're very friendly. We were creating a statute thirty-two years ago. We have, the Department of Commerce Secretary sits on our board. We do not want to be in a position where we're in litigation with the county and/or tax collector. We're very friendly and apologize, we haven't had a chance to talk yet, but happy to do that. If you guys adopt the resolution, we can work through any potential issues and then finalize the interlocal agreement if that makes the chair happy in that position.
Yeah, that would make me very happy. Just one last question. Are you on any particular timeline where you have to have everything in place by a certain time?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we are working on the financing now. Having this resolution would make a bit of a difference. I mean, the resolution, you still have things to do past this resolution, you know, the interlocal agreement.
Well, that's, so if, if you adopt the resolution, the interlocal agreement still needs to be worked through. The form of it may be approved by the county attorney, but if the city would like some changes, we can work through that. And then we would, once that's approved, then we, in working with the county and the city, we could be talking to the tax collector about the services agreement and just make sure there's comfortability there and then finalize the interlocal agreement.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I thought these discussions were going to happen based on our previous discussion, like, you know, with the tax collector. And it sounds like the city is just coming today. I would recommend deferring this to the next meeting because there's still some input that I think that we need to get. And I know that, Mr. Hewitt, you had mentioned to me that, you know, we're the board, we set policies. But at the same time, you know, there's important information that we want to get, you know, just for clarification purposes. And, I mean, I think you guys have certainly explained that to us, but I, I was really hoping that you were going to have an opportunity to meet with the other players in the, the city and in the county. And, you know, just to get some clarification on that. So that would, my recommendation would be to defer that until you have those conversations with them and that they understand exactly what the C-PACE program looks like.
Well, you know, that's disappointing, I have to say. We've.
You weren't applying.
No, I know. I get it.
And if you don't have a timeline to meet, then I don't think another two weeks to have discussions with these folks is, is out of question.
Well, this would put it into December probably, right?
Our, our next meeting is November the eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
Yeah.
I apologize. Could an option be that you guys adopt a resolution?
Let's move on to the eighteenth meeting. Yeah, we're going to, we'll handle this all the eighteen.
Oh, the eighteen.
Yeah.
That'll give you an opportunity.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I appreciate you answering all of those questions. Okay. Our country board?
Really don't have anything this week, but I'd like to thank the board very much. And there's not many times I thank y'all, but I'd love to thank y'all for that because we know nothing about this. There, there's no, nothing meant to be said toward anybody or anything. That's probably it, but I mean, if you were going to sign papers or something, wouldn't you want to know what it was about? Thank you very much.
And any recommendations from the sheriff's department? All right. Moving on to our county manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item we need to address is the 2026 County Commission Meeting and Budget Workshop dates. You'll find those in your packet.
So the button has a chance to look at the budget workshop.
The only, the only thing to note is the September seventeenth meeting that, that falls inside the dates of the PAC Innovation Policy Conference. So we're recommending moving that date.
The recommendation for that one is to, just to move it to the Tuesday, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
September twenty, the following Tuesday, September twenty-seventh.
Everybody agree with that? So we go with that.
Okay, good. All right, we'll press on with those dates. Next is the 2026 holiday schedule, which you also have in your packet.
I know that we have the eleven paid holidays, but I will ask the board to continue the Juneteenth celebration on the twenty, I mean, September nineteenth, which will be on the Friday of the holiday. As we had the last year. Are you all okay with that? Chair?
All right. So the, the holiday schedule will be as presented in addition to June nineteenth.
Yes.
Good. Let's see, I believe that's, I think that's all we have, all right.
Okay, and then the budget, budget workshop?
Yes, ma'am, that, that was actually part of the, the original...
Okay.
Thing you...
Yes, and I wish to thank the clerk's office for coming up with some dates so that we can, moving forward, you can be looking at our budget throughout the year.
And Madam Chairman, I do have one other thing, I just want to personally thank Chairman Danny Reddick, former chairman, Danny Reddick, it's been a, it's been a great twelve months with you as chairman.
Yeah, I love that, but it's been twelve months.
Right, I, I will say that your, your dedication and the amount of time that you have put in to be in the chairman of this board is quite remarkable, and certainly worthy of, of emulation, and it's been my personal privilege to work with you and accomplish some, what we all know are some really important things here in Bradford County, and we'll continue to work closely going forward, but thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Our attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Our commissioners, Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah, I would congratulate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank each and every one that's come out today, we had a good crowd, and thank you all for welcoming.
Ms. Reddick?
Thank you, I just, thank you, congratulations for being chair, and, and if I had any success at all by being chair, it was because of Amanda Brown and Scott Corningay's office, and also Rachel helping me, so thank you all very much, I do appreciate that. I do want to give you all a, a update on the recreation, super excited about it. I, I will say this, I've never seen the city and county work so good together, in fact, I think the city probably thinks I'm one of their employees now as much as I'm up there, but, but Chrissy and Drew are, are here this morning, and, and I'm going to tell you what, you all helped me so much, I think, and, and then also the same, again, for Amanda and Scott Corningay, I mean, that's why this recreation board is coming together as quickly as, as it is, I'm very excited about it. We actually already have a draft drawing of the plans back to remodel the, the concession stand and the restrooms. Dale Haas is really doing a fantastic job, and so we should vote for approval on that next Wednesday in our Bradford Sports United Board meeting, and if we do, we'll immediately start construction then and move forward with that. Also, as of right now, Amanda has, because we've put out the job descriptions for our Bradford Sports United Athletic Director, over the weekend, we got six applications in, so real excited about that, getting them on, on board, getting it going, because our goal is, like we said from the start, if we get the right athletic director in here, we ain't going to be asking for any money. So, you know, in the next three, on the third year, we might have to ask for some, but I'm telling you, with, with the excitement that's out there about that, not only between the city and the county, but the citizens, this is going to be a good thing, it's, it's going to go fantastic. Also, the city has agreed to allow us to use the old police station part of it, that's where the athletic director will be housed, and it, like I said, it's, it's moving forward very quickly. The pickleball tournament, that's for November fifteenth, the restrooms by the pickleball court are under renovation right now, and we should have them completed, well, we will have them completed before fifteen, so it'll be some nice restrooms for everyone to use down there, and, like I said, I, I can't wait for our next meeting to come back with some more good news about the, the board moving forward, so thank you all so much.
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, I just want to say, on the C-PACE program, again, you know, I've done some homework on it, and I've talked to, of course, these folks, and they did say in that meeting that they were going to meet with, you know, other people, and that just has not happened yet, so that really kind of threw me off, again, you know, looking at the program and understanding that the program is divided now as far as legislation, the C-PACE and R-PACE are two different programs that went through state legislation to, to separate those two. So again, I'm, I'm for it, but again, at the same time, I think that the people that need to know more about it, need to be informed, will move forward, and, and certainly by educating everyone involved. I know Mr. Hewitt was disappointed, but at the same time, there's no reason that it's something that we can, you know, look at, and hopefully they can set up a meeting here within the next two weeks, then, you know, we'll be able to, to move forward. So we're reminding everybody about our Veterans Day coming up, we will not meet before then, just want to thank all of our veterans, want to thank them for, for everything they've done for our country, you know, and, and just to be able to, you know, have the freedom to be like this, and to be able to, you know, have the freedom to decide, you know, maybe what church you want to go to, or any type of freedom that, that we have, each and every day, to be able to, you know, walk up and down the streets and, and have, you know, protection for us and, and our first responders, and so, anyway, you know, just, you know, thank our veterans so much. So again, I, the, the reason I preface that with that I am for the C-PACE program, you know, depending on, you know, the conversations they have, I will not be here for the November the eighteenth meeting, so I just want you all to know my feelings on that and where I'm coming from, so, but anyway, without those further discussions, you know, I think we're just, you know, kind of at a standstill, so hopefully they'll be able to get those meetings set up, and, you know, the Jackson family's already gone, but I've received several texts since then from them, just appreciating what the county did and, you know, having the proclamation, so nice to see all of them here. We certainly miss Mr. Jackson, and it is nice that the store is still open and that they carry on, and so please, if you can, support them, that's all I have.
Thank you, and I'd just like to say thank you to the board for your board of confidence, and I look forward to their leadership role for this, for this year, and I look forward to working with all of our municipalities, with our cities, and, and everybody. And I too like Commissioner Dory, that could, that's what came with all of my questions to ask, but I don't want to impede progress for our county, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we protect and move in the right direction, so I hope that everything can be worked out and that we can just, just move forward. Also, I want to thank everyone who participated in, it's important to support our municipalities. Hampton had their one-hundredth celebration, their twentieth celebration, a wonderful event, and Booker had their fall festivals, so any time that we can support those events, we're appreciating, and I appreciate Commissioner Dory in helping move forward the proclamation for Mr. Jackson, and, and recognizing our significant... Also, just wanted to, just remind, you know, the municipalities and group that we have until the fourteenth, to get the appropriations requests in, and any of the letters of support to, to do that. And again, thank you to everyone, and we're just looking forward to working together, and have a blessed...
Real quick, I apologize, congratulations, Ms. Futter.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Reddick, for all that you did over the last...
Yes.
I did kind of get caught up in what I was doing here, but thank you all so much, appreciate it.
And my thanks to our, our chair, Commissioner Reddick, for his work over the past year, he had a tough year, but he was tough, too, and so we look forward to everybody working together, all right? We'll meet again on the eighteenth, and if no further business, this meeting is adjourned.